Art Valachelli, Bethany Hall, Brian McAdow, Deerson Dinos, George Ostovich, George Jacob Holmuth, Justin Smith, Keely Kruger, Lynn Mohan, and Reese Hanson and Ryan Doyle, all who appear to have your microphones muted. Um, for those who are board members, I'd ask you unmute them.
You want me to call Bruce?
Bruce was on a little while ago. We'll reach out to him and see if we can get him back.
Okay. Okay, because, uh, for example, um, Lynn won't be able to take attendance if you don't say here and your microphone is muted. Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started with this adventure. Uh, for the record, this is the April twenty first, twenty twenty meeting of the Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred Board of Education. To start off with, the state has altered provisions of the Open Meetings Act allowing Boards to Conduct Business via Electronic Means and Enforce Limits on Gathering Size in accordance with CDC Guidelines in regard to the COVID nineteen outbreak.
Did you use the?
That being said, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, whoever's got the camera there, would you please point it at the flag? And we'll all stand up and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic one nation, under God, in the republic, with liberty and justice for all.
There you are. You're in.
Lynn, can we have the roll call, please?
Dr. Bidwell?
We can't hear you, but we can see you. All right, we're hanging up. Bye.
Dr. Bidwell? Can you hear me?
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me, Lynn?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Ferris?
Uh, you're gonna, yes, you can hear me. Yes.
Yes.
Great, great. Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Headley?
Here.
Mr. Holmuth?
Present.
Mr. Micali?
Here.
Mr. Parisi?
Here.
Okay, well, we're all here, so that's, that's a, that right there is an accomplishment. We are going to take things a little out of order with respect to, well, let's start with this. Um, for the board members or anybody who is attending, it is possible that sometime during this event, um, you will lose contact or connection with the meeting. If that happens, please try and just reconnect to begin with. And if that doesn't work, please contact Dr. Moan on his cellphone and he will try and reconnect with you. Um, we're also gonna take things a little bit out of order. And what we're going to do is we're gonna start with item two point five on the Consent Agenda. I'm gonna read why we're doing that so that the public, anybody listening in, will know. And then we're gonna take a vote on that section and then we'll move into Consent Agenda. So this is, um, based upon Governor Pritzker Executive Order twenty twenty dash oh seven, issued on March sixteenth, twenty twenty. It says, "In furtherance of the recent and ongoing federal and state mandates and recommendations regarding the coronavirus, coronavirus disease twenty nineteen, often known as COVID nineteen pandemic, the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred is attempting, adopting these temporary rules for public participation during school board meetings for the duration of the COVID nineteen pandemic. To reduce transmission risk and encourage social distancing, board members shall be allowed to attend all board and committee meetings remotely, and the administration shall arrange for an electronic means to enable such remote attendance. Board members shall be livestreamed via the internet to enable the public to view or listen to meetings remotely, and the administration shall arrange a means for the public to provide public comments at meetings remotely, whether orally or in writing. The administration shall notify the public as soon as practicable in advance of each meeting of the availability of such public viewing and any instructions for remote public participation. The Board authorizes the administration to consider public health requirements and recommendations in determining whether to allow members of the public to be physically present at a designated location and participate in person during board meetings. To the extent the public may be physically present, the number and spacing of seats and other conditions may be limited based on public health requirements and recommendations. Members who are not access to sufficient technology to access meetings electronically, they contact the administration in advance of the meeting to request appropriate accommodations." So, we are voting to approve those temporary rules. I would entertain a motion to approve the temporary rules.
Motion to approve the temporary rules is stated in section two point five of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one thing, that's Mr. Parisi seconded by Dr. Bidwell.
Sure, yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell? Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Micali?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. So, in that vein, I understand there has been public, a way for the public to, um, submit questions or comments. Uh, Dr. Moan will give out the way of contacting the board during the meeting. Dr. Moan?
Yes, we're taking emails at schoolboardpubliccomments@wcusd200.org. It's been posted on our agenda on our website since Friday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll move into the regular part of our meeting. The first item on our agenda tonight is our Consent Agenda. Um, there is also a, um, a, uh, routine personnel addendum that was posted on Board Book today. Um, with the exception of rule of two point five, please take a moment to review, um, the Consent Agenda. And, uh, I'd ask if any board member wishes to pull any of the items from the Consent Agenda. Okay. If not, take a moment to review everything and a suggested motion when you're ready is on the second page of your agenda and in Board Book.
Move to waive the reading of the Consent Agenda as printed in Board Book, move to waive the reading of and approve of the Consent Agenda as printed in Board Book, including the routine personnel addendum dated today, April twenty first, twenty twenty.
Okay, excluding article, item two point five? Since we already voted on it?
Excluding line point two, two point five is previously approved, I guess, yeah?
Yeah, great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I don't know who's second. I'm gonna guess that's Dr. Ferris.
Oh, that was Jerry.
Okay, Jerry, Dr. Mr. Micali, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Micali?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Okay, then our next item on our agenda tonight is our Communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public, staff, and board to address the board. Uh, we always start with public comments. And since we have an open line, has, Dr. Moan, has anybody provided any, asked to provide any public comments?
We have no public comments.
Okay. Um, are there any staff comments? All right, any board comments? Okay, well, I have a couple. Um, the last five weeks have been, I think, unprecedented in probably in all school board history. Um, and I have been nothing but impressed by the way our administration and our school district have handled, um, all the vast changes and the, um, the disruption that's occurred over the last several weeks. And I'm sure that in the future, as we go forward, they're gonna be, um, wonderful in addressing them in the future. Uh, I would like to give my personal thanks, and I think the thanks on behalf of the board, to all the teachers, all the administrators, all the staff people, all the students, all the parents, everybody in this community who has stepped up at a very difficult time and has, um, really stepped to the fore. And I think our district has done as well as can be done under these circumstances. I think it's worthwhile to say thank you to everybody for all their hard work and understanding. So I want, want that to be known. Uh, the other thing I want to remind all board members is, is that your Statement of Economic Interest is due on May first. If you have not done it, take a few minutes. It doesn't take very long, although it is highly confusing. It doesn't take very long to do it, so please make sure to get that in. Are there any other board comments?
Uh, Carl, I'd just join you in saying that I've been incredibly impressed with the administration's response uh, to everything and the teachers who have really stepped up to make this a, a quality experience for our students. Uh, on the whole, with one small exception, the, the feedback that I've gotten from other parents has been, uh, amazing, uh, that their, their kids are really, uh, getting some quality instruction at this time, and that's been my experience with, uh, with my three kids as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, if there are no other comments, then at this point, we will move into the Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, I just wanted to start by echoing Carl's comments and really expanding just a little bit. We want to thank everyone in our community as a district who's serving us in these difficult times. Our medical professionals, our first responders, people at stores that keep the grocery shops full. All of our community that's really bonded together in such an incredible time to help each other, we want to thank. As a district, we really want to thank, you know, our heroes, our teachers, our staff, our administration. You know, as board members have mentioned, we moved in a week from, from onsite, uh, more traditional learning to e-learning for over six thousand students. And everyone did an amazing job meeting the needs of our kids. And we want to thank everyone so much for, for all they've done. Uh, just to kind of update, make sure we're on the same page. By Governor's proclamation, we're e-learning for the rest of the school year. Our last day of school for all students will be May twenty first, which had been previously scheduled. Our last day for high school seniors will be May eleventh, and had been previously scheduled. Um, kind of a side note, we sent a survey out to parents last week. Uh, and today, we have well over a thousand responses. And overall, parent response has been very strong and that they understand what we're doing. They're getting the help they need. Um, when I asked about the amount of time that students were spending on schoolwork, the, the most popular answer is by grade level metric with the, the State Board of Education it set as a goal. So, I mean, just, uh, from all corners, we're hearing what an amazing job our staff's done and we're so proud of all the work. We continue to work to improve in e-learning and, and the hard work and dedication of our staff will continue. And we also want to thank our students and parents who have, who have been just tirelessly working to help meet the needs of our students and support our staff. So, thank you all for making this a, a successful transition for District Two Hundred, and thank you.
Okay, great. Um, and on that note, we'll move into our Monitoring Report, which is e-learning.
Yep, we're gonna have Susan Superintendent and Principal share with us some just practical experience of what we're seeing in e-learning. I think we'll start with Tricia, right?
Yep, just a second till I get the, it all together here.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm here to share with you some of the things that D two hundred is doing with e-learning. So appropriately, we're going to be starting with the Early Learning Center. So, teachers are designing weekly lesson plans with a focus on reading, writing, and math, um, along with teachers adding their own personal touch. We're also been doing daily principal messages. Michelle's been privy to those each morning. Um, and digital staff messages have been integral in keeping our students connected with teachers and with school. The focus, though, has really remained on maintaining those relationships and connections with the students. So as you can see on the slides, uh, we've been planning day, daily Google Meets, uh, Flipgrid activities where students can reply back to the student. Um, the one teacher there, as you know, we focus on being bucket fillers. She asked her students to reply back, which also was in relation to a message that I sent to the students that day. Um, again, and we also have been doing spiritual weeks. All of, of these are giving students multiple opportunities to stay connected with their school community.
Okay.
Those are spirit weeks, not, right, spirit weeks?
Yes. What did I say?
Just want to make sure everyone heard spirit. No problem.
Spirit weeks, yes.
How are we doing, everyone? Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'm representing the elementary team, just to kind of share with you some of the things that we've been doing. Um, very similar to what Tricia had just said, our teachers are sharing out, uh, daily e-learning templates, um, focused around literacy and math. Um, our main focus and where we put a lot of our eggs, um, early on and where we continue to put a lot of our eggs is making connections with the students, specifically the live connections. So we focus so much on, um, Google Meets and Canvas Conferencing, where overall, we've had about ninety-one percent engagement when we go live with students and just continuing those connections, um, and keeping the kids engaged, um, and letting them see their friends, letting them see their teachers, um, and just, and keeping them excited about, um, you know, feeling like they're still part of the school each and every day. So, our teachers have really gotten creative with those virtual meetings. Um, you know, they, they start those off every morning and they set the stage for the day and they explain, uh, you know, the, the e-learning templates to the students, answer any questions. And many of our teachers then do, uh, Google Meets during lunch as well, so the kids can come on and just socialize with one another. And then they also do, uh, Google Meets throughout the day, uh, almost like office hours for the kids as well. So kids can pop on and pop off and ask questions and just another way and another layer to support the students and the families. So there's a couple links on here. The first one is a first grader sharing her research project that she did, um, on the solar system and then utilizing technology in Flipgrid to share that research project and, and share what she had researched.
My topic is stars. One, the Milky Way Galaxy has about three hundred billion stars. The easiest star to find is in the sky is the sun. Two, stars are different colors.
And then, uh, the other one is a fourth grade teacher, just from the instruction end of it. Uh, our fourth grade teacher sharing out, um, a personal narrative and introducing to the students to that and expectations you've been screencastified. So, just being extremely creative with technology to keep kids engaged at the elementary level. And then we also have our associates are, have played a really important role in that too. They've been able to meet one-on-one, one-on-one with students too, um, each and every day. So, really exciting stuff going on at elementary and high engagement consistently.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mike, can I ask a quick question of Ryan?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you said ninety-one percent. Is it the same, I mean, are the nine percent that aren't, or is it consistently the same, roughly the same percentile at the same group of kids or, or what?
Yeah, the nine percent are the kids who, we've engaged with all of our families and, and connected with all of our families, but that nine percent are the students who are, are more on and off. Um, you know, sometimes they're, they're on for a day and then we don't see them for a couple days. So that ninety-one percent is a consistent number that, um, you know, when we're live and, and virtual via Google Meets that, you know, we're consistently having those students engaged.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question. Um, I have no one in the district, so I'm not sure how it works. Um, I read, uh, in the Herald on, that Harvard was, uh, you know, their concern was that some of the kids couldn't get to the computers at normal times during the day during the, uh, you know, maybe they only have one computer for three kids or maybe some of the kids are, older kids are actually out working. So, what times of day are these programs available to the, to the kids?
So, we share our e-learning templates, um, through ClassDojo and then also each of the principals share it on the website. Um, and we share it at seven thirty in the morning. So, those plans are available, um, any time of the day and multiple avenues. So, you know, they can get on it, ClassDojo, we also email it to the kids. Teachers also will email it to parents, so there's, there's multiple avenues. And they're available, even if, you know, they can't get on on a Tuesday, those Tuesday plans are still available, um, you know, on Wednesday and on Thursday as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And just to follow up on the nine percent, I mean, the buildings have, have done yeoman's work, reaching out to parents, to students. Like George and the tech department have sent out hundreds of hotspots for internet access, Chromebooks if we're having problems. So, it's been a team effort to get those numbers, um, and Ryan and the elementary team's done a great job with that.
And George, have you been using the hotspots as far as you know? Has that been a good thing to do?
Yeah, it's been, I think it's been a, a great, um, families who would have no internet connection, um, are now able to get on. And, and really, the number of students who are not participating has been cut in half almost since we started, is a part of it.
Good. That's good to hear.
So, let me ask, Mike, what is, what is the consequence both to the student and to the district if a student doesn't adequately participate?
Well, there is no consequence to the, the district in that, yeah, mute district. Um, that the state's not necessarily taking attendance. The student, you know, we've gone to the pass and incomplete, so they have to complete the work. And if they can't get there at, at the scheduled time, the teachers reach out to make sure the work is done at some point so they can get a, a pass for the period. If it doesn't happen in this time period by, before the twenty-first of May, then we go into an expanded period of eight weeks, we'll reach out again and give the student time to do the work so they can get credit for it and get a pass for, for this time period. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess the concern I would have from our end is if a student doesn't complete it at this point and doesn't do it during summer time, do they get, will they get held back? I mean, we're talking, well, I mean, almost ten percent and that's a, that's a significant amount if it's the same kids at the same time, same time.
Yeah. Ryan's number, that ninety-one percent, that's engaging in the live discussion every day. He's, they've contacted a hundred percent of their family, that most buildings have. A hundred percent of the kids are doing something. The ninety-one percent are doing the live activity during the day. So, being retention or not passing a class, there's lots of factors that go in there. You know, if someone had done the work for the entire year, we're not gonna hold them back for, for one quarter, obviously. We're gonna continue to work to get that quarter's work done so they're ready to go on to the next grade level. Um, it could be a factor, though, obviously, if, if a student wasn't passing and they weren't appearing and they're not gonna pass this, that would impact going forward. But it doesn't mean nine percent of the kids at Dean are gonna get incompletes. Um, it just means that on a given day, that's somebody, ninety-one percent of what they're engaging with. You know, on, on Tuesday's lesson this morning, that's the number he gave us, you know, that we're live with the teacher. The percentage of work completed overall is gonna be higher than that. Okay. But, I mean, it, the, the work that we're missing now is a huge concern for us. And as we move forward, we're gonna have to have continual plans on how to fill those gaps in, how to make sure when kids come back in, in August, we've got the, the skill set, spending some time in August reviewing more than we would have anyway. Those are all things we're gonna have to do working forward, uh, for sure.
Mike, I have a quick question for you.
To Jerry. To Jerry.
Um, it was, it's kind of my understanding, I hope I'm reading it right. The grade that child had at the time of the, of, of when schools were closed, they're gonna get that grade or better. We can't do, you know, no harm. They can't do worse.
Right.
But like, like I know at my school, we're giving out incompletes.
That's what we're gonna do.
Woodstock, we're giving out incompletes. Um, if they don't do the incomplete, um, are they still getting that grade then? If they had at the time, because we can't hold them accountable, can't we?
Well, they get incomplete. They have to finish the incomplete to get the retroactive credit for the grade. So we can't, we can't do any harm to them, but they have to do the work to get credit for the class.
Okay.
But if they don't do the work, and for example, at a high school level, that class is a prerequisite, and they haven't done the work and made it up in time, they could be told they can't continue into that, into the next year. Is that your understanding?
That's, that's absolutely what we're doing, yeah. And that message has been going out to parents already from teachers that have incompletes, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. Hey, like high school specifically is our biggest concern when you talk about credits. We need to finish this so we can get credit for this class to continue. And then the grade, like Jerry said, it, it can't be lower than what, than what it was on March thirteenth. It can only go up through extra credit teachers are offering, who make up assignments, missing assignments, things like that, allowing we do from, uh, the previous work to March thirteenth. Okay.
All right. Do we have anybody else?
Middle school.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. So at the middle school level, um, similar to pre-K and elementary, we've had some, um, goals as a middle school team. The first one was really to provide opportunities for our students to have that interaction with each other. Um, given middle schoolers are very much social beings, um, we wanted to find ways to engage them into their work and offer them classroom discussions. So these are a couple examples of ways we've done that. Um, many teachers have set up message boards for students to respond to a prompt and respond to each other's, um, answers, just like they would in the classroom, um, to be able to have a discussion with each other. We also are using, um, resources like Flipgrid, um, where teachers will give students a prompt. Like this one was a prompt where, um, our eighth graders are currently reading The Outsiders and after they had read a chapter, um, they were to pick part of, um, some text in the chapter that they had questions about or that they were wondering what would happen next. They'd share that with their classmates through Flipgrid, um, and then other students could respond to that. Um, or they've had, other example is they had the students, um, discuss which character they had the most connection with or if they would be a social or a researcher in The Outsiders. And then other students and teachers can respond to those responses. And we have a second site too, George.
Look, excuse me, Bethany, am I supposed to be sitting in the light because I am, you know?
Oh.
Is that on your screen?
Not on mine, no.
They're on mine. It's working fine for you.
I got him. Okay, so I must have it set up in some wrong way. I mean, I can see, basically what I see is myself.
Hmm.
You're looking good. I'm, I'm getting, I've become, I see who, I see who's involved. I don't see any, uh, and I know who's talking, but I don't.
In the corner, Carl, uh, if there's a picture of you there with a pin, you're gonna wanna, it looks like a thumbtack, you're gonna wanna click on that or tap on that thumbtack.
Thank you, John. That did it.
All right.
Sorry, thank you.
Absolutely. So some other ways that we are supporting our students. Um, in both buildings, we have daily announcements, um, a student newsletter that we're sharing with students just to share information with them. Um, up there in the top left corner, many of our teachers had YouTube channels and now those YouTube channels are filled with lessons, um, where they've, you know, instructed students or they've gone over, that's an example of a math teacher there that some students had, um, there were some common errors that she had found in the work the students had turned in. So she had gone over the problems for the students and posted it on her YouTube channel. Another thing we've really been focusing on is, um, because so many of our students are at different levels, um, offering student choice. So given the skills that we want the students to practice and, um, put in place, we've had, um, many assignments where the students have had choice because they have to work so independently. We wanted to make sure that, um, you know, we could meet them at their level and give them some choice in what they were doing to show that they had the skill set. Um, our social workers and our special services team is also reaching out to our middle schoolers, um, with different, you know, ways to take care of themselves, you know, things to do to walk away from the schoolwork, just to keep their stress levels, um, at a good level. Um, so that's an example of something that our social workers had sent out. The other thing that we've really been focusing on at the middle school is that because our students have so many classes, um, in a day, they normally would have eight classes. We have gone to a block schedule. And what that allows is the students then just have, um, you know, half of their classes in one day. We call that our A day, so they go to their first four classes of the day and then on the B days, they go to their last four. Um, that allows the students really just to focus on part of their classes and it really gives the teachers time to provide a lot of feedback and support to the students, um, given that they only have those classes to focus on each day. Um, another piece is the communication to our parents, um, and our students. Um, because they have multiple teachers in their day, we've, in both schools, we've created instructional, uh, or e-learning plans that we share with the students, the students and the parents each week through our newsletters and on the website. Um, and that bottom right picture there is an example of, um, part of one of our e-learning plans. So it has links to every teacher's lesson plans for the week, where students turn in the work, where they can get more support, links to their YouTube channels. I mean, it's a one-stop shop for our parents so they can support their students when they have questions. It also has a place for the teachers to place when their, um, live meetings will be so the students can organize themselves and their day.
Bethany, a quick question for you.
Sure.
Um, have you gotten any student feedback? Have you, are they happy with what they're, I mean, obviously, this Have you, are they happy with what they're, I mean, obviously, this is not ideal, we all know that. What are they saying in terms of their education? Are they giving you any kind of feedback?
Absolutely. I mean, middle schoolers, especially in our meetings, now that they're more comfortable with those, they're definitely sharing with their teachers, you know, what they need more help with. They really like the live meetings and those, like those examples I had of the message board and Flipgrid, they really like the interactive lessons. So our teachers have really been focusing on those, you know, for all of their lessons, to provide something like that, because they want to interact with each other, they want to interact with their teachers. But our, our feedback has been really positive because of those live meetings that we can have with them.
Good.
So I have, I have two, a couple of quick questions, too. My first is, and I'm sorry if I missed it, is the participation rate we're seeing at the middle school level, is it on par with what we're seeing in the elementary level at this point?
It's a little higher.
Okay, good. And then my second question, you know, obviously, by its nature, middle school and high school with the, even with the block scheduling, they're, you know, dealing with a number of different teachers as opposed to our elementary kids. Is the live instruction and the interactive instruction, do we have a policy about whether or not that's required to complete the course? And this sort of goes to what Bruce was asking with the elementary school kids and kids' access during specific times of the day.
But at the end of the day, the work's going to be the requirement, the product of class that they, they complete the work assigned. You know, what I think we've found, and what a lot of us have believed from the beginning, is the relationships and the live interactions are going to get kids there and get the buy-in, so it can help get the work done. But sometimes it's not possible. I mean, you've got kids, you know, watching younger kids or helping their parents do something, I mean, whatever it is, we have to be understanding of that, but our efforts to get everybody there, but at the end of the day, it's the work done. So we work around schedules, we work around, you know, anything they have to do to get the work done, and teachers have been really good about that, but it's the work completion.
And I think that our teachers have done a really good job of, if students can't come to those meetings, especially ones where they have direct instruction there, or they're going over examples, you know, at times they're recording those meetings, or they're creating other videos that they can share with their students, to really support that for the students that can't come to the meetings for whatever reason.
You know, and I'm sorry, this, something else for the high school kids and the junior high kids, are we pushing out access to the social workers or any mental health care for the kids at this point? I feel like those kids, and again, this is what I'm hearing from other parents a lot more at this level, you know, it's a tough time for all of our kids, but particularly the kids, I take the middle school with all of their development that's going on in high school, all the social, emotional stuff. What are we doing to make those resources available right now?
In both, our newsletter that we send to our families every week, and then we also have student newsletters that we're sending to the students. I know both at Creekside and in my building, myself and Mr. Wheatley send an email to the students every day with some message of something, and our social workers are linking, you know, they have access to be able to email them at any point, they're providing other resources of how to get in touch with them. You know, they're holding those live meetings, too, for some of their students to really connect with them. So, you know, we're trying to provide, even though they can't be with them in person, you know, lots of ways that they could connect with those people as well.
Thank you.
The social workers are going live, so I mean, there is still that interaction, and if a teacher was to refer someone to the social worker, that, you know, it's different, but it's still a live interaction that they're reaching out to. You're right, John, that's a huge issue in our, in all levels, but definitely middle school, high schools, social, emotional, and dealing with kids and the feelings and things, I know all different feelings they have now, so that's a huge focus for ours going forward.
Mike, I have a question, but I'm curious how all of this is, IEP.
Yeah, so that's a great question. That's a really, I'm sorry?
Repeat the question, I didn't hear it, please.
Michelle asked about IEPs, for students with IEPs, how it's impacting them. So it's, because it's individualized, it really has become, for each student, how are we going to meet their needs? Some, you know, they have an aide that can help them in a classroom, the teacher can take separate time. We're still providing minutes, any mandated minutes for therapists, any kind of speech professional, anything like that, we're still providing. It's kind of a struggle to continue to do that, but our special ed staff really has done a nice job putting full resources in to try to meet every student, where they are, what their needs. I've got a few emails from parents, but we put them in contact with the principals right away. I don't know, Bethany, there are, either one of you can touch a little bit on IEP students and interactions they're having with teachers and accommodations we're making?
Yeah, I can briefly touch on that. You know, we definitely have had both special ed teachers, special ed associates, you know, pairing up outside of class time and doing some planning together to see how they can serve those students who have any certain needs. And then also associates are joining Google meets specifically during class time, and also setting up, you know, instructional time inside from that in order to just work with them and make sure that, you know, anything that they have, any accommodation that has to be met is being met.
And that's very similar at the middle school as well.
Thank you.
All right, Art, let's finish it up.
All right, so moving on to the high school level here, you know, if you take a look at the left side of our screen here, you can see just one example of a calendar that's been linked by one of our math teachers. You know, it's a pretty thorough calendar, although it's just a simple text, you know, it lists the different blocks. As Bethany mentioned, we've moved to a block schedule. So it lists the time, just to remind the students exactly when they'll be meeting. It also will outline different assignments, what's to be covered, as well as links to some of those assignments. And then maybe most importantly is when they're going to have those live sessions, they've got the information for some of those right then and there. So our teachers have done kind of the same thing that both the middle school and the grade school levels have mentioned, which is to say, some Canvas conferencing, as well as some Google meets. But on the right side, which you can see is, teachers are also taking advantage of YouTube channels. So we have an example here, and it's pretty long, so you can, you can take a look at this potentially in your own time, if you're interested in brushing up on your chemistry. The chemistry teacher who has a lengthy YouTube video. The cool thing about this is it's pre-made by her, this is Mrs. Sharma, so it's got a bunch of her slides and information. As she goes along, if you were to watch it, she actually will take, you know, a pen or some sort of stylus and start underlining, highlighting, writing additional notes to, you know, do equations with the students right then and there. And obviously, the connection with the teacher is so critical, so she's always made sure to put herself up in the corner, so they can hear from her, see her. Now, this isn't a live session, this is something that would be prerecorded, that they'd be able to access, Canvas pages that our staff have set up. George, if you could go to the second slide there. Thank you. This year, you know, obviously, the engagement is the critical piece, you know, we can teach until the end of the day, but really, if we don't have the students connecting with our staff and with each other, we know that we're going to struggle. And so, again, I post a picture of just what a virtual, you know, lesson might look like live, so there on the left, you have, that's a Google meets, as they would call it, and you can see, students are happy, you know, they really are, they want to be part of these sessions. There's been a lot of joy, I think, in them when I've visited them. What's nice about Google meets, and I should actually, what's nice about Canvas is there's a feature, when you do a conference there, where you can actually have breakout sessions. And so teachers can actually assign, say, a three-minute breakout session, where students will meet quickly, the teacher can rotate through the groups and listen to the discussion. And I had the pleasure of jumping into an AP US History course just a week ago, and it was really fascinating, you know, they were talking about founding documents, preparing for the AP exam, and that breakout session was really unique. Then they were able to come back and actually talk as a whole, a whole class again. I think someone already mentioned Flipgrid, and I know we've been taking advantage of that as well. And please, you kind of jumped the gun, because one of the points I wanted to make is that we can't strand the students, right? We need to make sure that all those needs are being met, and so we are still providing that social, emotional support, because it is really important. So counselors and social workers have made themselves available to students when they have a need, they've sent out updates to the students directly, to their Gmail. I know that contact has been made with a number of them, because I've heard about some of the support that we're trying to provide. So we also, just in general, are trying to, you know, make this feel somewhat normal. We know it's not, but what we want to try and do is at least make it feel like there's some to our situation. So teachers have even done things like get a cup of coffee, or a hot chocolate, or a water and whatever, in the first five minutes of our live session, let's just chat, and let's just update each other on how we're doing, if it's that kind of, you know, tight-knit community or classroom. And the picture that you're seeing on the bottom right there is just one example, you know, of our orchestra teacher who had coordinated just, you know, simple connections with our students, and so, you know, this student went out and drew some chalk and practicing, and had a picture of it and submitted it to our teachers. So lots of different ways we're trying to connect with them. As a staff, also sending out videos weekly, trying to, you know, pull things that are supporting them, as well as just videos that are kind of fun and quirky, just kind of keeping their trust. So that's, I think, a summary of e-learning by all levels so far, and glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Is the participation rate about the same at the high school, Art, as it is with the middle school and elementary?
Yeah, it has been pretty close, John. I think a little bit lower, but we've been pretty pleased, and like I said, we've been working really hard. And so at this point, I believe both high schools, I can confirm, have contacted every home 100% to really get our students, you know, back into class, if you will.
Good.
I have got a couple of questions. First of all, in terms of what we, the materials and the equipment that we provided for school, how did, have you found that translated over to e-learning in terms of feasibility? Has it been, it doesn't work very well, it works very well? How would you, how would anybody characterize the transition between regular learning and e-learning in terms of equipment and curriculum and so forth?
I would tell you, I have not heard one complaint from a single parent or student for my building about the technology or the way which it's been disseminated, if I'm answering your question, Carl, I'm not 100% sure, but my hat, I'm sorry?
In terms of, you know, this just isn't built for this, or it just doesn't work well for this purpose. Have you heard any of those types of comments, and/or have you observed anything that would suggest that, you know, what we have is not really functional for this type, obviously it's not optimal, but not really functional for this type of, for this type of learning?
Obviously, I haven't. You know, I've been really, I've been really impressed with our staff, they've done a tremendous job. One's come forward and said, there's nothing for me to do, I can't teach virtually. You're right, I don't think optimal, but certainly, there's been dissemination in every class, for all of our, for all of our classes.
I think one important piece there is, you know, obviously, we've been one-to-one for a while. Canvas is our learning management system, we're a Google district, all those pieces have really laid the groundwork for us to have success here, and it's been, our staff putting the time in over the last couple of years, it really paid off in the last five weeks. And our administration's done a great job, our tech staff, and our teachers have bought into those things, which have, and a couple that hadn't bought in have now, because they've seen, you know, this is the best way in a virtual world to accomplish some goals. And Art and I have talked about that a little bit, too, it's, you know, necessity is a Miller invention, right? Sometimes, a couple places, that's come across also.
My second question, and this is due to the scenario, this goes on for a while, what ends up happening, I mean, are we going to have to make, what kind of adjustments do you figure we're going to have to make as a district if we are continually quarantined for, let's say, end of the next year?
You know, I think, I think it goes back to the basics. We have to build relationships with kids, and if we, if we don't do that, the instruction part's going to struggle, just like it does in a regular classroom. So if we start the year, and I, I hope, and I really hope, I think we're going to be onsite start the year, that'd be my hope. If we're not, then even as important as always, but even more important next year, we have to build those relationships and have those Google meets right away, and make sure kids get to know the teacher and their classmates, so they have that sense of community. Once we have that, then there are, there's, we have the tools to provide the instruction. It's not the exact same, it's not optimal, but we have the tools, and our teachers are doing a great job providing instructions. I think we have the vehicle to do it for as long as we have to, but the key part is relationships, and that's, that's been our message consistently, and the teachers will tell you, you know, like Art said, people are having fun, they're smiling, you need that. And you need, and like, you know, trust of Sharma's video, that works better, because kids really like her. I mean, I've been in her classes, she has a great energy, kids know that she respects them, and they respect her. When you have that, those videos are going to do a lot more for students. So that would be our challenge in the fall, building those relationships virtually, which would be a challenge, but we'll work on it and we'll get it done. I think the second thing, though, is social, emotional is going to be huge, we're not back here in the fall, and I don't want to give away next meeting's monitoring report, but it's our trauma program for next year. So I mean, we know social, emotional is huge next year, no matter what, and if we're not back, it's an even bigger piece of it, I think. Art, do you have any other comments on that?
No, I mean, I think you summarized that nicely.
Carl, this is Michelle, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So I wanted to address your first question, because I think there have been some unique issues that I've heard coming up, not for myself, but from other people in the Early Learning Center, because we're not one-to-one there, and so some of the families had challenges accessing some of the links that come through Dojo, because they don't work well on iPads, and some people don't have access to laptops. I think there's been some unique issues that has had, they've done a different job, but it's not perfect, and I don't know how to move into thinking this thing might have been prepared, what that would be.
Here's our biggest struggle, I think that's what Michelle was saying, and it's true, that because here's in, for a couple reasons. One, even when they have devices, it's incredibly parent-dependent. I mean, you know, you can put a fourth or fifth grader on a Chromebook and they can do a lot of things, a kindergartner, the parent needs to be there the entire time, step by step, and they haven't been one-for-one, one-for-one for us yet. So, yeah, we have to provide devices at Deeres, and there's no question that would be a change that we're planning for now, that we have to go digital next year, we have to have devices at Deeres, and that's, I agree absolutely. And also, just so we're clear, you know, like Art and I shared a conversation a couple weeks ago, he had a teacher tell him, in an AP US History class, it may have been the best discussion he'd had all year, virtually on Google meets, right? I mean, there's some things you can do really well. Working with our youngest kids, teaching them to read, teaching struggling kids to read, that's tough, and that, that's, I mean, it's going to be tough over this time, and I think, you know, that's bigger than a connectivity issue, that's an issue we're continuing to work on, we're going to expand. Everyone reads into the summer for kids that are willing to work with us, so I mean, we're trying there, but our youngest kids are the most vulnerable at this time, and we're going to continue to work with them.
Mike, can I add something to that, too?
Sure.
As far as, the tech department has been really great with getting devices to our kids that may not have a Chromebook or a hotspot, and they have been, it's been a pretty close to a 24-hour turnaround, and we submit an order, you know, to the team, so we've been coordinating that pretty quickly with families, and each week, another one might show up that needs help, but the response has been almost immediate.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I guess this sort of dovetails with that last one. The teachers, what kind of support are they getting in terms of teaching with the technology right now? Obviously, we have some superstar teachers out there in using multimedia. Are we getting assistance with that from the companies we contract with for the technology, the software?
Well, we have, I mean, Canvas actually has one of the greatest turnarounds on their hotline, on their support system, but more importantly for us, our coaches have really stepped up and done that role. You know, we have the, what's kind of a tech coach at the high school, and even the literacy math coach at the elementary, and then the instructional coaches at the, I'm sorry, literacy and math at the middle school, instructional at the elementary, they've been leaders for us the entire time we've rolled out one-to-one, so they continue to be. They continue to be the ones that are go-tos, they support people, and then teachers help each other. You know, I mean, the elementary team's done an amazing job collaborating on lessons, so they have conversations about, hey, you know, I'm using, you know, whatever, Seesaw, Flipgrid, whatever it would be, on this lesson, the teacher can see what that is, how they use it. So as most things, our teachers are also our best, they're our best clients and customers on that.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions or comments they want to make? Once again, I mean, it's been an experience, but it's been an experience, it's been softened quite a bit by the attitude of all involved, and I keep telling people who ask, I said, I think it's going about as well as we can expect. expect, and I don't think anybody would disagree with us. So thanks, everybody, thanks to all of you for your presentation tonight, thank you for your hard work and continuing concern for the well-being of our students. And we'll hear some more later, I'm sure, and for now, I'll move on to our next item. Next item on our agenda then is unfinished business, we don't have any, and then we move into our new business purchase of buses.
All right. Bruce, sir, we can touch on this. You know, we had talked, and actually, Bruce had brought it up a couple of years ago, about maybe wanting to go to gas buses instead of diesel. And we started looking at it, and I think Diane Carter, our Transportation Director, thinks now is the time to start making that move. I think there's documents in there with a variety of reasons, and we think now's the right time. Bruce, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, so, you know, every year, for the past several years, we've been buying six to seven buses, used buses, and so this year, we're, you know, recommending purchasing used gasoline buses with cameras. The buses are all 2020 models, and they have very low miles, I believe, I can't, I've been trying to remember, either Johnsburg or Alden Hebron is where they're at right now. So they, our staff has actually gone and looked at the buses. We have a paper here in the write-up that talks about the pros for gasoline versus diesel. We believe it'll save us money in the short term and the long term by reducing repair costs and increasing the life of the buses and the engines. We have gasoline pumps on-site at the Transportation Department, so that's not an issue. We don't need to buy any new tools, replacement parts will cost less, and gasoline is also less expensive than diesel fuel. So for various reasons, we believe this is the right thing to do. And then, just in, when you look at the school bus industry as a whole, they are actually now recommending that you buy gas buses, because diesel buses just don't run as efficiently, because of all the starts and stops that a school bus does. So with that, we're looking at the purchase of six buses for $485,922, including cameras. Midwest would also then give us $1,000 to trade in, and this is included in the budget for next year. And Diane did provide me a list of the buses we want to trade in. They range from 2002, one of our oldest, with 211,000 miles on it, to a 2005 with 211,000 also miles on it. So I get the six buses and the reasons for repairs, and the actual mileage on each one, if you're interested in that.
So they're between 18 and 15 years old?
Right.
And do they all have more than 200,000 miles on them?
Uh, one only has 178,000, but it has numerous repairs that are necessary.
And when you said low mileage, what are you talking about with the six buses that we're looking to purchase?
It's only around 10,000.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that sounds good, that sounds good. I like the idea of going to the gas instead of diesel, too, so to me, that made some sense, I appreciate that move.
It's going to take us a while to flip the whole fleet, though, just so everyone's on the same page.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We keep buses 18 years, so I mean, it's going to be a process. We think now is the time to start, for sure.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody have any other questions or comments regarding a proposed bus purchase? If not, there's a suggested motion on page 59 of your, 60 of your materials, or in Board Books.
Move to approve the purchase of six used buses with camera installations for Midwest Transit Equipment for total price of $485,922.
Second.
Is that Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Ferris, seconded by Mr. Hedley, roll call, please.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Okay. Then our next item is committee reports. Are there any committees that have, well, obviously no committees I've met in the last question. See, I don't know. Anybody have anything to report?
No.
No.
Okay. At this point, then, sorry.
I just have a question for the people on the Pride Committee, is that something that we're still moving forward with in the midst of this?
We can, if you'd like, we could set up virtual meetings, if you'd like, if that's with the board.
I just don't know what to do for this, you know, I want to make sure that we're at least talking about.
Yeah. Well, now that we know the school is going to be shut, is going to be shut down, I think it changes things a little bit, we can be, you know, I don't know, I mean, I guess the question would be, what is, what is the thought about, you know, we have a whole host of awards that won't be given out, the only ones that will be given out will be the Pride Awards, if we were to hold the meetings. And I know that they're important, but I kind of, I don't know, my personal feeling would be, if we can't do them all, we shouldn't probably do any.
We do intend on giving scholarships still, though.
Some scholarships, not all.
Yeah, right, so, I mean, we're going to try, I mean, we're going to try to give some.
Okay. And again, I mean, part of, part of it, there's no senior awards ceremony to give them out or anything like that, that's, that's another issue.
Yeah, the whole idea of the Pride Award, too, this isn't financial, it's just, it's a social recognition that these kids did something. Well, we're not doing the social part of it. So in my, my thought is, I'm not too interested in giving them out this year, based on the conditions personally, but that's just, that's my thought.
Mike, where are we on looking at some kind of an alternative? Have we gotten, have we really given any thought?
Absolutely, we're going to have some sort of senior, it will probably be virtual, but we'll do a senior recognition with both buildings of whatever awards we can give out.
I mean, if you envision it as something along the lines of, you put the student's picture on a, you know, on something that everybody can watch over on LiveStreet or something like that, and with some of their accomplishments along the side, you know, that this is so-and-so who won this Pride Award, and was on the basketball team, and so forth, and you can just maybe a list of a few of the accomplishments, you know, then it might be worthwhile to try and make these people to work.
I can just tell you, from talking to senior parents, that any way to recognize kids, they would really appreciate, and anything we don't do, they would be upset. I mean, I just, that's the general tone I get from talking to senior parents, they really, they're upset with the experience their kids are having, because of, you know, the situation they don't look in control, but I know, when I talk to them, and I call them with an email, I mean, anything we could do, they would appreciate. So I think if the board's willing to do it, we can set up the virtual meetings, if you want to go ahead with it, and I think, I think some people would appreciate it.
What's everybody's thought?
I think it should do it.
Okay.
I agree, anything we can do to recognize these kids, and some of those awards, it's not, well, it is social recognition, but it's community recognition, and it's our school community.
I just also think anything we can do to get some consistency and normal.
Yeah.
I was contacted, because I usually present the Magdaleno Award, and they asked if I wanted to do that, if we wanted to do that. I said, well, we have the money, so if they have a worthy candidate, yes, go ahead with that. I have been contacted about the award, I give it my wife's memory, but I'm going to forego that this year, because I haven't worked in five weeks, so, you know, it's a financial burden on me, and so, you know, I feel terrible about it, but I feel terrible for a lot of people who aren't working, so I just can't do that this year. But, you know, we're planning, I don't know if they're going to give out that award or not, they'll let me know. So that's where we're at on that, those types of awards.
Well, and then the question is, if we approach all the people who gave out awards, and say, are you interested in doing the awards, and they say, sure, send us the candidates, we got a problem in terms of trying to finish that up, you know, trying to...
Right. Art, maybe jump in, where are we at? I mean, kids have, we're deep in that process for applications for scholarships, right?
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, for example, VFW, DAR, the Daughters of the Revolutionary Revolution, we've already sent that to all of our staff, we've been in contact with organizations, because that was supposed to be a go as of, you know, tomorrow, maybe Thursday was supposed to be a go, so we were, you know, we were just thinking forward like we were going to be there for it.
Okay. Well, let's, who would be opposed of all of us, how many of you would be opposed to doing any kind of awards at all? What if we approached it like this, we'll give you, we're willing to give out, we want to give out the awards, but we have limited resources to be able to provide things, if you want to provide us an award or do something along those lines, please feel free to contact us and tell us what you want to do by such and such a date. And then, we know, we know we won't be in school on the 21st, but we can plan on doing something on some form shortly after that.
Absolutely.
For graduation. And we could try and have a list for each student of what they accomplished, you know, what they accomplished. So if they got, got an award to get, you know, it'll be flashed up on the board.
I think we had a pivot here, too, though, Carl, I, we were talking about, some of the scholarships are going to go through, some aren't, but specifically the Pride Awards, those are the ones, have there been nominations already, and those are from us? You know, that's the kind of thing that we can put together, even a press release and an email for the kids, as some kind of recognition. It's something that I believe would be printed, and I don't think we'd have a problem with, hell, taking out a page in the Herald, or something.
Independent, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's two different questions, to me.
Yeah, definitely, John, it's two separate questions.
Yeah, as far as the Pride Awards, I say we go, I am assuming now, we've already done our signups for which ones we'd be associated with, have there been nominations already, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think, as far as the Pride Awards go, we're talking about a couple of meetings for each of the board members, and we can put together a list. The other awards, it sounds like the administration's already working on some of them, and that was a separate conversation, I thought.
It's exactly the case, and I am very instrumental with the new award this year for the high schools, and we're not going to give it this year, because it's new. And that's a financial thing, and, and so, and Matt Boland, actually, who heads up the Awards Assembly for Woodstock High School, is in contact with people, because he called me personally about this. So they're two separate entities.
They're both working on the scholarships, I mean, both high schools have worked with our normal scholarship providers to try and get as much as we can for our kids, that's continuing to happen. The venue we could get out, we're still working on what that's going to look like, but every dollar our high schools can get for our kids, they're still working to do.
Yeah.
And again, if someone can't give, we're very understanding, because, I mean, it's very nice to give in the first place. Whatever someone can give, we appreciate it 100%.
So, I mean, I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is, the high schools are already underway doing what they're going to do, and we have no problem with continuing that, which is fine. We are, it sounds like people want to try and, the Pride Awards are already far enough along that we could do a Pride Awards, virtual meetings, if people want to do that. Are we good with those?
Yeah.
Good with that plan?
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll just see what comes, I mean, I just, somewhere online, we're going to have to set a deadline for when they want to, you know, when we're going to have, like, I don't know why, maybe we do, maybe we don't have to set a deadline, of some sort, for this year's awards, and let them give and do what they can, until they want to do. And the rest. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
And perhaps by, maybe at our, like, no, maybe now it'll be a little easier to finalize some plans for some kind of graduation recognition, even though we won't be there in person, some kind of graduation program, and...
Yeah, we're working a lot on graduation, and we'll have some different options going forward, just so we're all on the same page, and the board could obviously give us different feedback, but, but our preference is to hold out a little bit and try to see if we can do something live, whether it's in small groups, however, whatever it looks like. If we can't, then we'll go virtual, we're ready to do that, but I think we're willing to push it back a little bit, to try to just capture some live experience for kids. I just think that's such a special part of the high school graduation. Middle school will be virtual, but high school, we're really trying to capture something, it's going to have to be later, but we're still working on that and getting messages out to our families.
That's good to hear, Mike.
Sounds like a good plan. All right, so, I guess, Mike, the next thing would be to contact the various entities who are involved in the Pride Awards, and let them, I guess the way to do it would be to find a time and then contact George to set up a virtual meeting.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Yeah.
And candidly, it's been a long time since we signed up, so...
No, we're getting more of it. Yeah. You know, the other thing we may want to do is extend the Pride deadline, and I think it ran up against when we were out of school, so maybe we want to resubmit it and give it another two weeks, just so every kid's got an opportunity, so we don't run into, hey, I was going to apply, but, you know, I didn't get it in because all this happened. So if the board's okay with that, I'll get the list out, and we can start doing that, but maybe we'll give kids two more weeks, and we'll send it out again, just to make sure we've got all the applications.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, great. Okay, do we have anything else for committee reports? Good point, Michelle, thank you for bringing that up. Next item then, on our agenda, is to go into closed session. I'm going to ask for a motion, and again, please repeat exactly as it's written in your agenda. We have a motion to go into closed session.
Well, why not? Approval to go into closed session for the purposes of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district. Security procedures and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Ferris, do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry, Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth?
Your mic's off.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi? Mr. Perisi? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. You have 601 on that one, Lynn?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are in closed session, so, Mike, how does this happen? We close out of this and go into the other one?
Yes, close this and go into the closed session.